My metal plane going home.
I believe it's, uh, I believe it's time. It's a little after five. I'd like to welcome, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight and glad to see you. Happy New Year, everybody. God is gracious with another one in this beautiful America. And, uh, we're gonna go ahead and start off with a prayer. And once I finish the prayer, we'll stand up and face the flag and do our pledge of allegiance. You know, you want me to pray for that? Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together to, to serve our community, to serve our friends, our country. Father, we thank you for this great country that you blessed us with. Thank you, Father, for those that have fought over the years. And thank you for those that are fighting right now to keep this country free and other countries like us free. Father, bring them home safely, those that are at war right now as we speak. As we sit here in this free meeting room, uh, we've got, we've got Americans fighting right now. Father be with them, not only with them, but with their families and this country. Now, Father, lead us and guide us in each and everything that we do. And please bless this meeting tonight. In Jesus' sweet, holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me start the year off good.
Congratulations.
Somebody swat chairs with my hands.
Yeah, you finally got it.
No, you had it. I got it now, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you got it. That's, I want, yeah.
Well, we're starting the year off good, bud. Well, we have a special presentation. Boy, is it special. Press here, I see you. But I think this is, this is very important to all of us. Mike Davis, First Community Bank, Mike Davis.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Spock had surgery today. And he won't be here this evening.
You don't agree?
Yeah, he came out okay. But we'll, uh, we'll still go ahead with the presentation if that's okay with you.
Well, you're all smiling. Go ahead and, go ahead and look at both of them.
I'm a happy gentleman.
But before we make the presentation, I just wanna go over a few highlights with y'all of what's been accomplished in the past, yeah, since January of 2012. Does that sound like a pretty good place to start?
I think so.
We'll talk about our favorite one first, which is the City Net Debt. That was a twenty-year note for First Community Bank. And it started off at five point one five percent and it escalated to five point seven five percent. Uh, we refinanced it in August the thirteenth to a five-year note. There's a hell of a bit of time off that. At a, a three and a quarter percentage interest rate. And tonight, we're gonna pay this note off in sixteen months into that five-year note. And a lot of the things go to the citizens of Tifton for passing Splash Five. Those four and a half million dollars voted on and approved by the citizens to retire the state to, uh, so we can move on. That's a three point one million dollar savings to the city of Tifton.
Three point.
Pretty good, huh? Uh, then we paid off a GFA two note, which was two hundred twenty-four thousand. Uh, and we saved about fourteen thousand dollars when we paid that note off. We refinanced GFA three and four. GFA is Georgia Financial and, uh, Environmental Funding Authority. They changed it from, and they keep us guessing on that. But we consolidated those two loans. And that resulted in savings, uh, we financed those down from one of those five percent interest, the other was three percent interest. And, uh, we redid those notes at two point two percent interest, cut eight years off the notes, and saved two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And then we have this little thing we call outsourcing or outsourcing. And we've received about eight hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in rebates over the past eighteen months from ESG. Eight hundred thirty-eight thousand. Thank you very much. And of course, you know, we've done a lot of other things with ESG as well. Recently, up at Works and Natural Gas, they took over the maintenance and operation of those two, uh, facilities also. So what this amounts to is a, uh, a savings in interest on debt to the city of Tifton of three point four million dollars. Eight hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar rebates in the outsourcing. And the total principal payoff of six point two million dollars in principal in the past three years. I think we deserve a hand. First Community Bank's not here tonight. Uh, Mike Davis was gonna come and receive this check. Actually, they got the check about noon today. Uh, but we're so proud of paying off City Net Debt that we wanted to have an official, big payoff check.
Turn it up, turn it up.
So that's the payoff. Hey, we were upside down for a while. But this says City Net Debt Payoff, Mayor, just like you wanted. That's what it's for.
Thank you, brother.
It's done. We're out of there. So we really wanna thank First Community Bank. They came through when we were in a crunch. Six million dollars in loans and, uh, they've been a really good partner for the city of Tifton.
Yeah, that thing was here when I got here, here when all forty people got here.
It's gone now.
It is gone now. We thank you, Larry. Thank everybody that's here.
Thank you very much.
A little pony.
Mr. Harrison.
Lord, God, don't let you leave.
You saw that check, didn't you?
Yeah, can I have it?
No, I just want, I want you to sit here.
That's pretty.
All right.
That's good. We like it when good things happen in our community. Praise God for it. Now, Mr. Attorney, I'll join you down there. I think we have something to do, don't we?
We have to swear in our new, uh, new court judge.
All right. We're gonna swear at him or swear immediately?
We're gonna swear at him and then we'll swear him in.
Better swear at you first.
Oh, why don't you go over there and you can set that down?
That would be wonderful since this is, uh...
How's that?
All right.
What good? We got his name wrong. We're off the bat.
Yes, you would. Raise your right hand, please. Do you, Chad Van Norman, swear and affirm that you are a citizen of the city of Tifton, Georgia? And being a public official of the city of Tifton and recipient of public funds for services rendered, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of the city of Tifton, that you will duly and faithfully perform your duties as judge and municipal court for the city of Tifton. You are not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. You are not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia you are prohibited from holding and are otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
I do. Thank you, everyone.
Chad, why don't you introduce us to your family?
This is my son, Ethan. He's six.
He's very shy.
And this is my wife, Amy. She is actually, uh, she's formerly Amy Brooks. Her grandfather started Brooks Body Shover. It used to be Brooks Gas Station.
Oh, yeah.
Across from First Baptist Church.
That's right.
So she's, she's from Tifton.
Very young, very young. About his age.
And we have two girls, uh, five, five and a half months old twins. But we didn't wanna bring them, but we'd shut the place down, so.
We're doing everyone a favor by arranging childcare for that.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, everyone. We greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night. All right, our first, um, order that is here is approval of the capital agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Got second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. Ron.
Yes, sir. Not too bad. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. You can still do it. We have Rita's one and then we have the one of twelve points.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Well, we just, uh, just approved the agenda. Uh, I don't need to, can't even do that.
We didn't have this heard before.
No.
No, I think, you know, since it's just the board appointments, I think we fine to go ahead and proceed with those tonight.
Okay.
Do you want to just amend the agenda? I mean, we just need a motion to amend it at that, so everybody's comfortable.
I think you could do that.
Yeah, but Ron, give me the...
I'm sorry. I'd like to formally request that they add it.
Go ahead and request it.
I'd like to formally request that you, um, add the appointment of the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we amend the agenda to include that item.
Second.
I apologize, everyone.
All in favor, sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. Curtis, you can join me up front, please. We do it just a little bit different than, uh, than the legal students. We do it nonetheless. You don't have to raise your hand until we get to the end of the page. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Board of, Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals of this city and that I will support and defend the Charter of the city of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state toward the handling of the United States and America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed under the providential pender. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council and rules of disclosure adopted by the council. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the bodies to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged from the city of Tifton. And you'll raise your right hand, sir. And you say aye do?
Aye do.
And welcome aboard. Ms. Rhona.
Yes, sir.
That situation I was talking about right before we... Can you send us something out about that? That, uh, that thing on the phone?
Yes.
What we have to do to declare, be sure it's okay with him and all that stuff. All right. Now we come to a, a time that we really enjoy. And it's when we hear from our citizens. It's called citizen input, and we do this every month. We allow you to come up. And I noticed nobody could sign in, but we'd still let you get up and say if you were, if you were so inclined. Uh, is there anybody that wants to get up and say anything? Starting the year off right. If not, we thank you anyway for coming. And, uh, I'd just like to say my good friend Bubba Harrison. I think he's been in one week today. I think I was sick one time. Bubba's still okay. Bubba, thank you for coming. You're always here and you love this town. You love this town. Bubba's daddy was Red Harrison. And he was, he was a hallmarks of this community. Worked right here for the city. In fact, he was the superintendent. He was... That's right. Public work for Red. Thank all of you for coming. Okay, no citizen input. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of the following minutes, December the first of 2014. So regular meeting in December the eighth of 2014 was a call meeting.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. I just saw the doctor with glasses on. The doctor, I had to wear glasses now, and guess what? I forgot. I'm surprised I could even see Bubba back there.
You just heard me calling his name.
All right, we got some items here on consent agenda. And generally, don't understand just resolutions. Why is consent agenda?
We don't have any consent items.
We don't do that? I just saw a sentence there. All right, we'll start with the resolutions. Item number two, Rob.
Mayor, as you are aware, Council, we just issued some tax exempt bonds for the latter part of the year, the very end of the year. One of the suggestions of Bond Council is to go along with IRS recommendations to adopt policies and procedures for post-compliance issuance of the bonds. It's not something that's required by the IRS, but it's recommended. Basically, it keeps your finger on the pulse, making sure you're ensuring compliance after you've issued the bonds. Some of the things that you'll see that's in the resolution, it, you know, provides for due diligence for review at, uh, regular intervals, I think it's annually. Identifying an official who will be the compliance officer, which is going to be your finance director. It also provides for training responsibilities. Once your finance director, your post-issuance compliance officer leaves, it provides for required training of someone who's gonna take their place. And also provides for, you know, anybody gets a letter from the IRS that, you know, Bond Council or I would be immediately notified of any issues. So basically, this is, goes a little bit beyond your tax certificate requirements as far as, you know, keeping your eye on what's going on with your bonds, making sure you're in compliance. And so by recommendation, Bond Council, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and abide by the IRS recommendations that we adopt these policies and procedures. You know, in the event there's ever any inquiry about, you know, how our bonds are working, are they performing, are we in compliance, the IRS will ask us if we have these policies and procedures. And it would be a good idea to let them know that we do. So that's basically this resolution is nothing more than, uh, ensuring that we have ongoing compliance and our finger on the pulse as far as these, these bond issues.
Okay. And when you vote on that?
Yes.
Will you vote on that?
Okay, I make a motion to provide for the post-insurance compliance.
I'll second.
That's the issuance, uh, post-issuance compliance. All right. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous, Mr. Ron. Item three, Larry, that's the resolution authorizing award of service weapons to employees of the Tifton Police Department upon retirement.
Yes, sir. Resolution before you, in the, about the third paragraph stipulates the, uh, conditions upon which a retiring police officer can receive their service weapon and continue to, to utilize that weapon, uh, if, if they so see fit, you know. But they have to have twenty-five years of service with the department before they can receive the service weapon. That would be the recommendation of, of staff and the recommendations in the police department. Uh, we've done this before, uh, but we didn't do it in the form of a resolution. We had a letter. If we adopt this resolution, then that would become city policy and police officers, officers who aren't good served for twenty-five years would then be entitled to retire their service weapon as well.
Okay. I'll accept it later.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the, um, resolution for the service weapons to go with the employees after twenty-five years.
I'll second.
I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You said we're gonna retire. Would the officer, the police officer that get the weapon be required to get a license for, for?
If you're, if they're gonna continue to carry a weapon, I'll, I'll refer that to the police department. If he wants to carry it in public, you don't have to have a license to keep it hidden.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. But if he, if he carried it in public, he'd have to have a license, right?
You don't have to look at the law, but I was thinking that retired police officers have exemptions and that, just like, just like current police officers do.
I can look at that.
Okay.
Ask them, Chad. I, I'm not sure about that, Johnny, but I think, my, my gut tells me they do, but there may be an exception to that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, forty votes, all right. So, uh, we've got item number four, which, Larry, you need to say?
No, sir, I'm ready.
Yes, Reverend Alonzo Madisk, you remember, standing between Tifton County and City of Tifton Staff Development Company and the Tifton County Development Authority for expansion and relocation of Hunt Road.
Yes, sir. The resolution before you, you told us to have a little bit of eyes. This is a, uh, basically an agreement between Tifton County, City of Tifton, uh, Staff Development, and did I forget? The Development, Tifton County Development Authority, uh, to make some road and, road relocations. I don't know, for years now, we've been trying to tie Hunt Road into Carpenter Road. And this opportunity came, uh, and, and we're gonna be able to get some financial assistance from three other, four other entities other than Tifton County. GDOT is gonna kick in, uh, hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And each of the other entities will contribute a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is for the relocation of Hunt Road. When you come off of eighty-two going north on Hunt Road, uh, right there beside that Stafford Development property, it was a part of the old, uh, traffic place.
Yeah, traffic truck.
And this is, this relocation of this road will allow us to put in a development that's coming and, uh, be able to address traffic issues and safety issues on three, on eighty-two, as well as, uh, rerouting Hunt Road so that it can tie into Carpenter Road and relieve some of the traffic at the intersection of Carpenter Road and Highway eighty-two. It's a good deal.
That's a good project. I'm glad we got these other three that, like, all four of them joined with us. Really good. It's all about economic development.
That's exactly what I'm on. And the, the obligation from the city of Tifton and the three others, it says a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept item number four.
I'll second.
I got a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous, Mr. Ron. Item five, resolution authorizing city may have to exchange real property for public road purposes.
In order to accomplish this project that we just talked about, the agreement, we're gonna exchange property with, uh, eighty-two West LLC and the city of Tifton. The city of Tifton currently owns the Hunt Road through which this property's gonna be developed. And so they are gonna give us the right of way to, to relocate the road, to tie it back into basically Larkin Road over on Carpenter Road. And that's what, we already have the deeds and that's what I authorized them to do.
Thank you, Larry. Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. Item number six, resolution providing for alcoholic beverage license for Main Street Inc., DBA Main Street Beverage, located at thirteen ten South Main Street. Mr. Ron.
This resolution was presented to you in October for a property that used to be known as Big Gems. It's two pieces, actually. They have a laundromat there. And I explained to you all that the gentleman had considerable work that he had to do. The time for him to obtain the alcohol license did expire. From the time it's approved, you have thirty days to actually pick up the alcohol license. And he did not do that. He still had a few things to do. So he is reapplying. He has to go through the process again. And he does anticipate having that, those items completed within the thirty-day timeframe that he's going to be allowed. There again, I did not rerun the background check. I did it in September. Everything was clean on him. So, you know, we're still recommending approval. And he has completed all of his requirements with the exception of one, and I'm not recalling it right off the top of my head. So he's pretty well satisfied, most of staff, with the exception of one item. And he will not get his license until that item is taken care of.
So do we need to make our motion contingent upon?
Um, that's up to you. He will not get his business license until that is satisfied.
And we've already voted and approved it once, right?
We did, but it expired.
Okay.
Once it expires, it has to be brought back to council. That's the vibes before you now. Whatever makes you feel the most comfortable, you can do.
I make a motion, uh, for providing for alcoholic beverage contingent on being all requirements for Main Street, Incorporated DBA Main Street Beverage, located at thirteen ten South Main Street.
Second. I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That's unanimous. And Ms. Ron, if you'll speak, the number seven, it's a resolution providing for alcoholic beverage license for Candy Stop, located two oh seven West West Street.
We expect Candy Stop to be under due ownership in a very short time. We have a, uh, it's an applicant. We've run the background check on, it's a partnership. A good record with both of those folks, and staff is recommending approval of this. This is for beer and wine.
Can I make a motion to approve item number seven?
Second.
I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. That is unanimous.
Okay, item number eight is, um, I need a motion to suck the qualifying fees for the twenty fifteen elections.
So moved.
Well, now, Ms. Ron, that'd be three of a sudden. Be a conflict of interest if we said that one. Three of a sudden.
Gotta do it.
How about that, Mr. Attorney?
It's the way it is, man.
The, the qualifying fee, qualifying fee for mayor is two eighty-eight. Council districts, two oh four, is two oh seven. That is a little bit of an increase.
So moved.
Pretty good.
Poor kid, Johnny. Yeah, that's right.
All right, can we get a vote?
I just moved.
He did. Johnny did.
Any of you there? Johnny did the motion.
Yeah, Wes did the second.
Wes did the second.
They're really cracking up over here. Yeah, they're having way too much talk for this.
Well, we got a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? We can all fire a vote on this, right? I'm just picking on it. All in favor, please sit and raise your right hand, saying aye. It didn't, it didn't make the swing. We voted it out. It'd be two dollars and eighty-eight, sir.
Well, just for your information, qualifying will be, um, the last week of August. Uh, actually, August thirty-first through September the fourth. The election itself will be November third.
You got that much time to save up your money, so you're lucky. Hey, Wes, that feels good, huh?
It feels good, huh? Yeah. Y'all can wait another two years, I believe.
Now, we got, so we can save our money.
That's right.
We'll be straight. But good luck, uh, gentlemen and ladies.
It rolls around quickly, doesn't it?
Yes. See, when you, when you, when you the senior member on the council board, you persist on that.
I tell you, it doesn't come around as quick as that two years for congressman and for, and for state senator. Two years, every two years they got to run. And that needs to be changed. We need to, somebody, I've talked to several people about that.
Yeah, I don't think that's on your agenda.
No, I don't think that's a nice...
I'll be glad to look into that.
Our, our country and our, and our state needs change. Way too much, that way too much running.
Rob's gonna buy a bigger meter, you know?
That's right. Well, y'all, let's see. We have, we have a set the gauntlet now. We're gonna get out of here in almost thirty minutes. I want y'all to know, Ms. Ron, Larry, anybody else have anything to do with it? We'll expect this in the future. There'll be eleven more Monday nights in this year. And, uh, y'all don't, y'all, we expect the Thursday meeting every day.
And before our workshops. Yeah, where the gauntlet meeting, yeah.
Question. Uh, we go, when are we gonna get back to the mound? You got any?
Uh, we're shooting for one February.
First week of February. Okay.
They're still doing some painting in there and, uh, we have a little bit of homework we have to do for ourselves, but...